Note that all council members are present this evening, so we have a full quorum of council. Now let's open the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
In welcoming citizens tonight, I have two things I would like to mention. Number one is to acknowledge our state representative, Jeanne Morrison, who is here tonight, in order to thank her for all that she does for us in the state legislature. And on behalf of council, I'd like to extend our condolences to former mayor Will Armstrong on the loss of his wife. So, she was a real lively force in our community, and Will served a long time. So our condolences to him and his family. So we shall move on into communication, items from council.
I have, on the consent agenda, I'd like to pull D3. And on that note, I just want to express my opinion, not necessarily the whole dies here, but we have quit reading the consent agenda, and I think for transparency, we ought to start doing it again for the public that does not have the consent agenda in front of them. But that's me, okay?
I know that there was a topic brought forward maybe two or three council meetings ago by Councilman Lofgren related to wanting to discuss topics and procedures for future work sessions. So, Councilman?
Before we get to that, there's something I want to bring up. The first meeting in October, every year, the city council meets on the National Night Out, and I think we should change the meeting date. I think as Councilman, we should be going to the National Night Out and visiting with our constituents and have the meeting the Wednesday after that. I'd like to know how everybody else feels about that.
I'd like to think about it.
Okay, we have time. We have time. I did bring up that I wanted to discuss work topics for work sessions, and I'm open to anything, but I would like to suggest that we all have one-on-one meetings with the city manager. And our role, I think the role of these work sessions is for us to come to some agreement on strategically where we want to move forward, the direction that we want to give the city manager. And I think at those meetings, we should bring up the topics to the city manager, because they're going to prepare the work sessions, and let him come up with a suggested work sessions for us. But after the work sessions, we need to come up, we need to have one meeting where all we discuss is what, how, what direction we want the city to go as a city council, come to consensus. The mayor gave a great speech the other day. He brought us some great points, and I agree with his points. There's other points I'd like to bring up, too. But I think we need to have these work sessions and then move into a strategic planning session where we come up with a consensus of what the city council would like for the city of How does everybody feel about that?
I agree with submitting those to the city manager, but I also feel that it's the mayor's obligation to set that agenda for the work session. It's not us, but to give us, you know, I'm sure he'd welcome our ideas, and then I would have him set with the city manager and come up with two or three topics at the most.
One work session I would like to have is on affordable housing, CBDG money, homelessness, all in one meeting, mental health, discuss the officers that we have that have been trained in mental health and have one meeting about that. I think one good thing that's come out of this camping ordinance is that homelessness is being discussed, but I think we do need to discuss it as a city council in a work session. And I would like, I request a work session like that.
Well, I have no problem with the topics being submitted to city manager, but I have no problem with me getting with him and setting the agenda, because I think there needs to be some, I would like to see these work sessions be purposeful and where, in topics that we really need to, I always call it more the big picture topics, and it's no secret that I've always advocated that. And I think it's important for us as a body so that we can really sit and talk to one another in a less structured, not with the confines of a motion, and discuss these issues, and I think we'll come to better decisions. And then those work sessions will then work into resolutions that come before council. So I have no problem with doing it.
Sure, yeah, and just a couple of thoughts on that. Obviously, from my standpoint as city manager and as staff as a whole, it's beneficial and helpful to us to have a very clear understanding of where the big topic council priorities are, so that then we can align our operational strategic efforts to match those that council has, because it's important that we are able to connect the dots between what we do at the ground level with the master and the overall goals of council. So I think that's a good exercise to go through. I agree that we should ultimately, just from a resource standpoint, time standpoint, focus on a few areas, but I do think that in order for council to make an educated decision on which few areas they want to eventually have all of us focus on, that there is a certain level of education involved in those topics. And so I look forward to the conversation with the mayor. If it results on 10 topics, we can certainly provide quick educational briefings as part of the same workshop on all those 10 topics before we break down into discussions on, okay, which are the three to five topics that council really wants us to tackle over the next two or four years, and really start developing some thought process behind this. So I think it's a worthwhile exercise to do that.
I'd like to make sure that we keep in mind that we can't bind future council members, future councils, that when one of us is replaced, that person's going to have all kinds of great ideas that they want also. And secondly, I'd like to make sure that our discussion and our education is limited to things that the city, that the corporate body of the city can do something about or can address. Education is all well and good, and it's important, but I don't want to get into the weeds. I want to stay focused on what the corporate body of the city can accomplish.
Good point. Well, I've never believed in meetings for the sake of meetings, but I think meetings that have a well-thought-out agenda and a purpose for a meeting can be very productive. So if that's kind of the will of council, then I think we can...
Sure, absolutely. And just from an expectation standpoint, obviously, we're going through the budget process right now, and so I'm not sure what your level of expectation is on when this will transpire, but I would like to recommend that we wait until we get through budget and kickstart our new fiscal year and dive into these strategic conversations in the fall.
Sounds great.
Well, I think those conversations could lead to a new way of looking at budgeting, too, if we really have an interactive process.
We say you've got to have all our topics that we would like to see discussed in, not necessarily the first one, but some work session to you by the end of September. Give you all the month of October to, or a couple of weeks in October to review them, pick out a couple, set the first work session in November.
Yeah, let me work on a tentative timeline for that, and we could distribute that in the next couple of meetings and be very specific on when, you know, we want the topics and when we want to schedule them, and so we'll work, our staff will work on putting together a timeline for all of this.
Y'all do have an advantage over me. You've been through the budget before. It's going to be a learning curve for me.
May I suggest quarterly meetings, workshops, instead of having them every month, because, I mean, we've got a lot of meetings to go to.
Well, they could possibly replace a meeting, who knows? I think we let it evolve and see how we, as a council, come together and think that we're working as best we can as a body. And sometimes these things take, take a life of their own, and we, once we start working together outside the bounds of what we're doing now, we'll know what to do, know what to do. Okay, any other items?
I'd just like to say that I agree with Councilwoman Solis, that I don't like the idea of not reading the consent agenda. I think a lot of people follow our meetings by watching them. I don't think as many people follow our meetings by reading the agenda, so I agree with her.
Yeah, and since the consent agenda should be reduced, since we allowed the signing of those other deals, I think we won't have as many items on the consent agenda. So I have no problem with that either. All right. So moving on, any more items from council? Now I'll move into citizens' communication. Anyone, there are no public hearings tonight, so citizens' communication, if you want to speak to any matter on the agenda, please step forward.
I would. Thanks, council members, and Jeanne Morrison, the representative, for coming. I would like to thank the special crimes unit for busting up a big narcotics trafficking ring in my trailer park. I live at East North Mobile Home, and the trailer park manager's been running a drug trafficking narcotic operation from the cartel for the last year, and he's been dealing to minors like 15 and 16. I would like the district attorney to see if additional charges could be brought up for child endangerment and also for dealing narcotics in a school zone. There's a big sign in his yard that says it's gun-free school zone. It's a school zone and a gun-free, which he would carry a gun in the park illegally. He's already been busted for that, but he's been busted June, July, and August. And he was also giving people, I don't know if you've heard of marijuana wax, but they also call it honeycomb wax, and it's several times stronger than marijuana, and they smoke it like in a pipe, in a bong, and I don't think that's right, him doing that to the children. And he had over 100 clients, and right now he's in jail, and he can't get out because no one's going to pay $6,000 cash to get him out. But I wanted to thank the second platoon from 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM, they took over. It took about 20 police officers to bring it down, and the special crimes unit. And also the house beside it, I want to thank the SWAT team for busting that drug trafficking cartel in 2202. But he's been running a drug trafficking ring for the last year, and I appreciate the police department, what they did, and I was wondering if I could put a letter of appreciation in their personnel files. You know, the second crime, second platoon and the special crimes unit, they've been working for the last year, and my trailer park manager would always say, "How do they know where I'm at?" I said, "They're smart, they're educated, and well-trained." That's how. And thanks, I appreciate everything.
All right, thank you, sir.
Good evening.
If I may ask, just if you will tell us your name, you don't have to give us your address or anything.
Certainly. My name is Kim Pickens, and I am a resident of Victoria, Texas, and a homeless advocate. I'm here tonight to, I know that the ordinance for anti-camping was voted on last time, and it was passed in the first reading. I'm here to implore you to please vote against the anti-camping ordinance in the second and third readings, because it is not a solution to ending homelessness, it's not a solution to end people needing to find a place to sleep, and it is potentially causing what most of us fear who deal with vulnerable homeless population. On Saturday, one of our women who are homeless was standing out on a corner, and yes, she was panhandling, and she was shot with a pellet gun. Fortunately, she was able to get a partial plate and look at the vehicle that did this, but I can't even imagine having a situation where it becomes open season on the homeless. So I would implore you to please look for a different solution. The person who brought this whole thing to light is not on the street anymore, they are housed. So, like I said, I'm imploring you to please look for other solutions. I appreciate Mr. Lofgren for suggesting that there is some communication, some kind of educational component, before you continue to do any other ordinances that may actually cause more damage than they do. We have a lot of people out there, and they're not hurting people, and so I would implore you to please not, not put a target on them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pickens.
Thank you for hearing us this evening. My name is Patricia Hastings, and I'm the director of Christ Kitchen here in Victoria. We're a 501(c)(3) soup kitchen, serving the homeless and the hungry. We provide one hot meal a day, Monday through Saturday, 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM, without judgment, and we meet other needs as our resources permit. We feed about 200 to 300 people a day, 5,000 to 6,000 people a month, and we've been doing it for 35 years next March. That's a long time. We've had this problem a while, wouldn't you agree? We understand homelessness. We're in the trenches every day with our fellow organizations here in Victoria. We get it. I wouldn't want anyone living on or near my doorstep urinating and defecating. I wouldn't. We wouldn't. But I'll tell you right now, I've got at least 10 men and women living on or about the premises of Christ Kitchen right now. I just ask you to slow down before taking any action on this ordinance until a plan is formulated to provide a safe place for our friends to be. Be well, Victoria. Midcoast Family Services, Christ Kitchen, Perpetual Health Home, Salvation Army, Promise Point, Homeless Coalition, the Humility Project, and more. We have all been working together, holding community meetings to determine just what the needs are of those we serve and how they can be met. Mayor, I know you've been to the South Side meeting. We've begun the meetings at Christ Kitchen now. If you would just join us at the table and help us come up with solutions, that would be wonderful. I'm asking that you first help create a safe place for our friends to be, and then let's work on adequate low-income housing and the other needs that are brought up by the communities we serve. I thank you for hearing us tonight.
Thank you.
My name is John Griffin. My wife, Lynn Knop, and I have lived our entire 35 years of married life in Old Victoria, and I come before you for two reasons. One is to honor the life and legacy of Linda Armstrong, who was a relentlessly focused woman who worked for the common good for the people of the city of Victoria. Second, I come here to respectfully ask council to get more community involvement and more data before finally enacting an ordinance on homelessness. I think that most of us want the same thing here, a city where people can enjoy their own property in a city that doesn't seek to criminalize those who are homeless. The discussion about this ordinance has been among good people. Some of them see themselves at this point on sides. My thought is that we ought to have the data, the justification, before we enact a permanent ordinance. That is, what is the data on the problem, the extent of the problem? Is it an ongoing problem? What's the data? How often is this happening? How likely is it's going to happen in other neighborhoods? I don't think yet we have either consensus or data on that issue. As a resident and as a city attorney myself in the small community of Seadrift, Texas, we generally want to gather data on this extent and the numerous, how often the problem has come up, and we generally don't like adopting an ordinance until there is some sort of a data record to suggest how often the problem occurs. Now, I don't know that, having lived in Old Victoria for 35 years, but getting this data is the due diligence, I think, that council wants to have before passing a permanent ordinance of this kind for a community. So I respectfully ask that council gather that data. We want to be in a situation where the public owns and respects the outcome, and y'all have been very nice to talk to me on the phone, and I appreciate the courtesy all of you have given me on this point, but I think it's important to all of us that we'd like to reach an agreement that has some consensus and that the public will own and embrace. Because in visiting with you, Andrew, I appreciated your comment about people being on sides. My thought is if we slow down a bit, get more community involvement, get the data on the extent of the problem, we won't be taking sides, but we'll be making solutions. Together, my thought is we're not there yet, but with patience and working together and listening, we will get there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Jim Cole, and I am also a resident of Victoria, live in Old Victoria, and have been in business in downtown Victoria for almost 40 years. I want to thank you for your service, and I also want to thank you for taking on this very important topic, and that is the problem with homelessness. I think we, there are sides, but in so many ways, we stand together. And we stand together in our belief that people should not live on the street, that our city is above that, our community is above that, and that we can all agree that they should not be living on the street. Where I think we differ, and I think this is a difference that can be bridged, is how to deal with it. The proposal that's before you today is to criminalize sleeping on the street in a public area. I have long believed in using experts when I'm faced with an important decision. I, as a businessperson, believe that finding the best, getting the best counsel is important in any decision. I think you believe that. I think the, this council relies on experts. You rely on your legal team, you rely on accountants, you rely on engineers, you gather experts, and then you, as a collective body, make a reasonable decision. In the last month or so that this has been discussed, you have heard from experts. I don't think you've heard from all the experts, but you have heard from experts, and those experts have universally expressed opinions that for the problem of people sleeping on the street, putting them in jail is not a reasonable way to approach it. It doesn't work. The chief of police has told us that it doesn't work. He's the one that would enforce it. So the goal is to get people off the street. We all know that is not an easy thing to do. Luckily, there are experts on that. I don't consider myself to be one of those. People with experience, the experts in our community are unanimous. The experts are telling us it does not work. Council members have said the ordinance will help the police deal with the homeless people, with homeless people. You cannot ignore the fact that the chief of police says that's not true. The chief of police says the ordinance will not help. Let's not ignore the ordinance, let's not ignore the experts and pass an ordinance that will not make things better. Instead, let's gather experts and come up with a solution. Homelessness is solvable. People will tell you that it's not, but there are examples around this country where it has been solved. Let's take a case study. The lady that is the subject of this ordinance is a human. I'm going to use her initials. M.M. is a citizen of Victoria, of this community. M.M. is no longer sleeping on the street in my neighborhood. Thanks to the true experts, Midcoast Family Services, people like Jenny Stafford, Lisa Griffin, Mallory Thurman, M.M. is sleeping inside. It worked. She is getting help, mental health care, steps are being taken to get her a job. Putting her in jail will not help that and will not advance that. A month ago, she was sleeping on a curb in my neighborhood. This was not accomplished through putting her in jail, but through proven effective meetings. Organizations like InHomelessness.org and BuiltForZero.org have proven that a community like Victoria can solve the problem of homelessness and do it at a savings compared to what it takes to care for the homelessness. There may be those who say it can't be done, but there is proof that it can be done. I suggest that the city council commit to continue to study effective ways our community can come together so no one is sleeping on the curb in our neighborhoods or anywhere else in our city. I suggest that a committee be formed to study the problem, call on the experts, do your own study, and come up with an action plan. I suggest the plan have a stated goal by which the city of Victoria will end homelessness in our community. Based upon what has been done in other communities, I think it can be done in three years. You can be the council that ended homelessness in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else speak to council?
Hi, I'll be quick. My name is Brittany Dearlem. I am from Victoria. My husband and I recently moved back to Victoria and started a mortgage company here. It is my understanding that there may soon be an opening on the planning commission, and so I just wanted to let you guys know that I submitted my application, and I would be honored to serve the city.
Any further comments?
My name is Robert Shook. Lived in Victoria 62 years, and the gentleman who spoke before me about data is on the Many of you have agreed among yourselves that the best data is experience. Good decisions come from good data. Without data that is long and wide, bad decisions. If you look at the thirty minutes of your body, back to the beginning, you'll have to do some reading, they're easy to find, you'll find the experts, some experts. This is not new. You can begin in 1839, and these minutes are available, and there's been lots of men and women, too, of recent years who faced problems that you will be amazed to read Reading thirty minutes will, of course, take you back, and if you're not bilingual, forget about it. But it will take you back to the Ayuntamiento de la Bahia, because your first 10 years as a Mexican impresario colony was supervised, I'm talking about things as unimportant to you and me today, as a piece of paper. Would come from La Bahia, that's Goliad. Well, it's not Goliad, La Bahia, period. Every aspect of litigation, peace, food, vagrants, you name it, if you're bilingual, read about it, and you'll be reading about something that will make you, one, more knowledgeable, and, two, one hell of a lot, pardon the expression, more proud of Victoria. proud of Victoria. What you've got here is the most unique town in Texas. I've got the admissible evidence that becomes exhibits in court if you want to get into that end of things. But you'll have, I won't say fun, but you'll come away and you'll think, ha, I didn't know that. And the next time you drive on Novera, and that's more of a sentence than it is a journey, don't sit on the bench, but that's the sentence I would impose on minor criminals. So many minutes or hours on Novera, you can tell yourself, well, it's been a long time since this was poor farm road. And that's where the poor farm was. And if you'll read Sidney Whiziger, page two twenty-two, he'll give you, and he's an authority, an expert on Victoria. You'll read in there what the poor farm was. The buildings, the food, and so forth. There's nothing like good data, as the gentleman said, and that good data requires more than voting. That's the last thing you do. The first thing you do is read the City Minutes and find out you doggone sure are not alone. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Shook. Anyone else wish to speak to council?
I'm sorry, my name is Jeff Moore. I was under the understanding that there was a PO today. I've filed an appeal with the building commission to reverse the decision to demolish two of my low-income housing properties that I have, 1011 North Deleon and 613 West Brazos. I was just wanting to bring that to the attention of the city council and find out what further process I need to go with.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm here for the third week, first, third council meeting. And let me say that we have some good ideas, but we've got to start somewhere. And the ordinance is a place to start. This woman that we keep referring to, she's not the only person on our streets. She's not the only person in our neighborhood. We now have a woman who walks barefoot in the heat on the pavement, wearing a bikini up and down the streets. She's looking for something. We have a kid who rides a bike at night with a big flashlight, asking, where do you live? Oh, down there by the park somewhere. Really? You know, we are referred to as the affluent neighborhood. Affluence is not there. It's historical, and it is declining. And if we don't do something soon, we won't even have a historical neighborhood. Now, everyone's asking for suggestions. Well, what do we do with these people? How about the unused school, Nazareth Academy School by St. Mary's Church? It's been vacant for how many years? It's just sitting there. It needs to house someone. How about the homeless? How about setting up clinics in that particular building? Well, I suggested that to a couple people, and they went, oh, downtown? Oh, well, you know, it's okay for my neighborhood, but downtown, we can't do that. We need an ordinance. We need to get something on paper and get it started. This woman has been an eyesore, that's what I was referred to, for two and a half years. And when I finally, in the last six months, started making an issue of this and looking into the possibility of an ordinance, I was told, well, she's been a problem for over two years. Well, has anyone done anything about it? Are there any agencies out here? No, no. No one has done anything. We need to start with an ordinance. We've got to have legal background and then go from there. I'm willing to sit down with all these other agencies, but I would like to see their budgets. I would like to see their CEOs and where this funding is going. One agency in the paper today received $10,000. Where is it going? Who is it being used for? I will be happy to meet with all of these people. Thank you. I'm sorry. I'm Sandra Strickland.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Andre Mednis. Been in Victoria since seventy-nine. I've lived on both sides of the spectrum, unlimited expense count to living out of my car and back. So I dislike how we, we're going, we have poor people, yes. I don't believe we have as many homeless as the way that number is calculated. But I would like to ask that the council slow down on passing a new law. I believe that there would be existing rules and laws that can be used for the moment to alleviate, you know, some of these infractions, let's say, that take place. But we do need to do something. And one thing I've learned in my life is sometimes we take forever to do things. We have big churches in town. We have so many groups that are dedicated to mental health, to homeless issues, to the poor. I don't, what I would like to encourage is that the council take a proactive step and say, okay, here is two grand, a committee gets set up within thirty days or something like this. The major churches in town, you know, one from them, a representative from the other, from these groups. If we don't, we're going to end up with, we already have a shanty town. I've seen it at times. You go by the little tent cities, it's probably a bad name. But sometimes, and I, the only reason I stood up is when she mentioned, you know, we do have an empty building where these people can go to at times. Now, will it pass all the new ordinances, you know, well, you know, occupancy, you know, plumbing, all of these kinds of things? We may have to have a relaxed look at that. But is, but it would be a hundred times better than someone living on the street. The people, they need to be accountable, but they are so beat down, some of them that are on the street. I had five kids in this town. I took them down Sixth Street in Austin when they were all little, showing them how people were living in the doorways at night. And I says, you know, if you don't do something with your own life, and I, believe me, I made more than a few mistakes of my own. I says, but this is where you'll end up. And these people need a hand. I've talked with these people at times. You know, some of them just need direction. They need to learn how to be accountable, learn how to start with themselves. So I've just asked that we set something up where we have a firm goal, but not to hurry into a new law that may not do us any good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
I'm Melissa Lyman. I live in the historic park area as well. I'm not going to go into a whole lot, but what I want the council members to take account of is that we must be fair to everyone. So, here is our person in our neighborhood, sleeping on the street. She gets a house, or apartment, or whatever. How did that happen? Why hasn't that happened for everyone? Why did she get chosen above everyone? So I think it kind of goes back to the planning of it. I don't want her living in my yard either. No one does, and that's okay. But I think we need to be very careful with the ordinance, that there is a way to enforce it, that when they get out of jail the next day, there's a place for them to go sleep. And they will find out what it is, and they'll be able to go there. Because I fear that the example that we have set with this woman, which is, you know, very nice for her, and I'm thrilled, and I hope that she stays there and does what she needs to do, that this will be available for everyone before we get carried away with a very strict ordinance. Apple News today cited Los Angeles with four thousand RVs on the street, and they have to move them every day. I knew a dancer when my daughter was there who lived in a car his whole life, and he had to move every day. And the biggest obvious reason is health concerns because of no restroom facilities, no health care. So we look at infectious diseases and those things spreading. So, but they said they had an ordinance. They were going to bring it back for relook. They went back, I can't honestly remember how many years. It had been enforced ten times in Los Angeles. So, keep that in mind when we think about doing it here. And that's all I want to say, is that everyone gets the same treatment for their situations. Thank you.
Thank you.
I really tried not to get up. Just couldn't pull it off. Hi, I'm Jenny Stafford. I'm CEO of Midcoast Family Services, and like the others, I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I have some prepared notes, but I'm not so sure they're appropriate at this point in the, in the meeting. I do want to tell you a little bit about homelessness. When some, when things are said in a public way, I feel like there needs to be a public response. And that is that homelessness occurs on a very large spectrum. People become suddenly homeless for a number of reasons. Kids get kicked out of their home when they turn eighteen, and mom and dad say, it's time for you to fly. And then, like my own children who flew and came back multiple times, there are actually families who say, once you leave, you can't come back. And usually, those are families that are struggling with poverty, or mental illness, or addiction. But it happens. It happens every day in our city. One way we know that that happens is there are a hundred unaccompanied youth that are homeless right now in our city that are getting to school by themselves and graduating by themselves without any family support. People become suddenly homeless because of family situations, because of domestic violence, because they get evicted, they're not able to pay their rent. For those individuals, shelter services are appropriate. The Salvation Army, the Women's Crisis Center, any of those things that are in place to take care of short-term needs that are truly crisis in nature. But people can't stay in that crisis situation. Following, if they can't resolve those situations, if kids can't go back home, if people can't pay their rent, for whatever reason, they can't resolve their own homelessness, they end up transitioning into more of a medium or short-term homeless. And for that, the best thing you can offer is transitional housing. And Victoria has very, very few transitional housing beds. Midcoast has ten beds, Perpetual has a few beds, but that's it for the whole city of Victoria. And it's, it's good for people who are trying to make enough money to pay their rent again or to get their IDs that perhaps got burned up in a fire, whatever happened. It buys them a little bit more time. But for very, very many individuals, they cannot self-resolve their homeless situation, and they end up being chronic. And those are the people that bother us, because they're on the street panhandling, they're sleeping in the park, they're sleeping at Deleon Plaza, they're sleeping at places that are very visible, that are, they're concerning, and they're upsetting, and I agree, nobody should be sleeping that way, but that's their only choice. The solutions to this are there. There are communities all over the United States that have come up with a problem for homelessness. But we can't do it alone. At Midcoast Family Services, we can't do it. Salvation Army can't do it. Perpetual can't do it. But we can do it as a community. We can do it with all the members coming to the table. And in response to a comment that was made earlier, doing it is very, very expensive. I'm working on a HUD budget, actually, I'm working on four HUD budgets. I have grants due Friday, and so I'm working feverishly to get them done. Right now, we are providing housing for sixty-six persons who fall into chronic homelessness, which means they've been on the street for more than a year, and they have a disability that prevents them from obtaining employment and maintaining their own housing. It's a pretty strict guideline. I think I read it to you at the last meeting. We have forty-two rental units, and our overall budget is a half a million dollars a year, five hundred thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars. Of that, we have to put up forty-eight thousand, nine hundred dollars every single year. It's a recurring match amount. And the purpose of that makes sense. HUD wants to make sure that our community is buying into the program and into the services that we're offering. They're not going to just give us money without strings attached, and we appreciate that. But the good news about that, do you know how much that comes out to a person? It comes out to seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars per person to remain housed for a year. I don't know about you, but I think that's a pretty good deal. These are people that are now housed rather than living on the street. They are not using the emergency room for their primary care. They're not being arrested. They're not having interactions with law enforcement because they're trespassing at the local grocery store. They are now getting their benefits, they're getting their health care taken care of. They are stably housed. So there is a solution, but it's going to take more money. It takes more than ten thousand dollars, as was mentioned earlier, because not only do we have that match, but we also have a match for our emergency shelter, which is significantly more than that. But it's, the good news is it's a solvable problem, and we can solve it, but we can't solve it in two or three weeks. It's going to take an extended period of time. I wrote a plan fifteen years ago for how to end homelessness in ten years. Obviously, it didn't work, and so we need to rewrite that plan and take it off the shelf and put it in the burn pile. If you don't hear anything else from me tonight, I want you to hear that homelessness will not be solved with shelter beds. Homelessness will be solved with housing, with apartments, with rental units. And that's what Victoria is so short of right now. We were short before Hurricane Harvey. We are really short now. And so, as, together with other developers, we've got to figure out an answer without jumping to any, anything that may have an unintended consequence a few years down the road. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none?
Could I ask for, I know this isn't appropriate, but the newspaper said that Ms. Stafford's group needed forty thousand dollars for some type of a shelter, and if she wouldn't mind, I'd like some clarification, because this is great PR. We've got a crowd of people here that want to do something about this, and maybe we can all write you some checks.
Yeah, the grant that I'm feverishly writing right now has a match requirement. And we will, our intention is to add another twenty-four units to our pool. The question came up, why somebody gets placed and another one doesn't? We do something called, it's a, I'm not going to bore you with an acronym, but it's a vulnerability test to see how vulnerable a person is, the longer they've been on the street, the more mental health barriers they have, the less family they've got. It's a whole list of things. But we want to put another twenty-four units in Victoria, but we need another match amount to do that. If we write a grant for another four hundred, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it's about a forty thousand match, annual match, every year, we've got to, we've got to come up with that money every single year. And, you know, the good news, it's a reoccurring match. No, that's the bad news. The good news is, is we don't have, I have to sign a letter that we can do it, but I don't have to have the check in my hand for another couple of months. So I've got a little bit of time to do some more fundraising. But, yeah, we're looking for match money right now.
Thank you.
Does that serve men, women, or families?
It will serve, yes. It will serve anybody who can meet the index for most vulnerable, and that does include men, women, and families, families with children.
And when do you need the money by?
The start date will be August one, but we'll actually have to submit all the documents to HUD in about six months. Grant goes in now, and then our technical submission will follow. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from citizens? If not, we'll move on into the, there is no public, there are no public hearings tonight, so we'll move into the consent agenda. And I think item D three was pulled.
Well, as a point of clarification, is council still in agreement for me to read the, to not read the entire consent agenda and only pull D three? Or would they prefer that I read each item separately as we had previously?
Consent, we'd rather have it read.
Okay, each one? Now, Ms.?
There are only two tonight anyway.
There's only two, and I pulled one.
If I read them individually, did you still want me to pull three, was what I was asking?
Yeah, because usually, you read two of them.
Yeah, because usually you read two of them together, and the third one that got pulled, you read separately.
Right.
Okay.
So the consent agenda is D1 and D2?
Yes, the consent agenda is D1 and D2. D1 is the approval of minutes of the regular meeting of August 6, 2019, and D2 is a resolution appointing a new member to the library advisory board to fill a vacancy and declaring an effective date.
I move to accept the consent agenda as read.
Second.
I move in second to accept the consent agenda with the exception of D3. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same say?
Item D3 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding with Victoria County for the 2019 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program application to be submitted to the county in the amount of $19,109, of which the city is to receive $9,555 upon award of the grant and declaring an effective date.
So move.
Second.
The only reason I pulled it was because there was a change in the amount of money that's going to be needed, and I just wanted to make that clarification. So.
I believe that Chief Pratt can answer that question.
Amended one.
We need to amend that?
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. I believe that we did amend that.
I think they sent us a new.
It was already, it already included the amended, as far as that.
The confusion came in Ms. Solis is that when the CM1 was originally submitted, the police department did not realize that they would have to include a certain amount of their own budget as, in addition to the funds that they were receiving. The actual amount that they're receiving in the grant has stayed the same the entire time. It did not change.
Okay. So we don't need to make an amendment during that?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
So it's been moved in second to accept the consent item D3?
I have a question. So we're doing a, a grant. We're going to get $19,109, and it's going to cost us $14,970 to get that grant.
Yes. And when you add, when you add in the, the extra amount that the, the police department's going to put forward for the program. We split the money traditionally annually with the county, and that money has gone down each year. And so in preparation for this grant, we identified this, our wellness safety program, but the price tag for that was more than what we anticipate getting from the grant award. So we're going to use our budget to fulfill the rest of the remaining $4,000, $5,000 that's needed to fulfill the program.
Okay.
You hear the discussion? We have a motion on the floor in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Before you read D2, I have, I asked Thomas, when this was appropriate, and he said there was no, it, D2 is the second and third reading, and two councilmen, myself included.
E2.
E2, excuse me, thank you. This is the second and third reading, and I would prefer that it just be the second reading.
Mr. Loff, if you'll give us one minute, we have to, before, I, you read it off the agenda and then have the mayor open it up for.
According to Thomas, I did not have, he said you could do it before the thing and discuss it, if it was going to be the second reading or the third reading. So when you read it, it would be, if everybody agrees we need another reading, this would be the second reading.
The item typically has to be called on the floor before any type of action or movement.
Not according to Thomas. But I'll wait. Go ahead and read it.
You might have misunderstood, and we've, I know that City Manager and I had several discussions with him about this, but if you'll just let me call it to the floor, then we will handle that shortly, I promise you.
Sure. Well, let us, let me move us on into action items, if you will.
E2, planning commission appointment?
May I?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. Item E1 is an ordinance amending Chapter 15 of the city code to prohibit camping in public places, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for enforcement, publication, codification, and savings, and declaring an effective date.
I move to approve item E1.
Second.
It moved in seconded to approve item E1. Is there any discussion?
I would like to move that it be the second reading. I did not attend the last meeting, nor did another councilperson. It was a very emotional meeting, and I think it needs some more thought. And I would like this to be the second reading, and not, not the second and third reading.
So you would like to make a motion to split the second and third reading?
I would.
I'd like to make another motion before that. I'd like to table this discussion until the second meeting.
Well, procedurally, we have to take these one at a time? Okay. And so if Councilman Loughburn has made a motion to split the second and third reading, at this point, we would need to see if there's a second to that?
I second it.
We moved in seconded to make this the second reading only on this ordinance. All those in agreement, say aye.
I mean, you could, you could, yeah, you could. During, during the discussion phase of this, there could be additional amended motions, technically.
So he could make a motion? Ricky could make a motion?
No, I have to wait. I have to wait.
Moved in seconded so we can open it for discussion. So I can tell you, my position has not changed on the matter. I, I personally went and met with the sheriff to just, again, ask what happens when somebody is arrested on this ordinance and is presented at the jail. And I was told that they would first be given the Sandra Bland test questionnaire. If they were mentally ill, they would not be put in, in, in the jail. And then anyone who is put in jail would probably be indigent and magistrate it out and be back on the street in 12 to 24 hours, max. So my, my objection to it is, I don't think it's going to be effective. That person can be right back on the street, they go to the same place they were, and, and then our police department is going to have to, excuse me, our police department is going to have to go repetitively, take them back and forth. From my perspective, if we could slow the process down and come back, I did learn another interesting thing in my conversation with the sheriff. He thinks there's a way to deal with panhandlers in a joint task force with our city. So if we could slow the process down and come back and discuss all of this in, in a single, whether we do it in a work session, or whether we do it at another time, I think we give ourselves the time to find out more data. It gives our, our, our agencies, our nonprofits in town, the opportunity to come forth with more suggestions and more meetings. I think, I think it's become a focus of our city, and I think it started a lot of good discussions. Matter of fact, after Wednesday, when I talked, I was, I've been contacted by two people. One is a real estate developer that thought he could convert some older buildings in town into affordable homes, that he thought he could rent for like $300 a month. Had another contractor call me, asking, "Why can't we take some of these older buildings and subdivide them?" So there has been a discussion in our community, quite frankly, you know, as, as a result of, of the discussion of this ordinance. And I, I just, for me personally, I don't think it's going to achieve what we think it's going to achieve. And I do, do know that Gulf Bend has gotten more funding this year for mental health and probably will help sustain our mental health officers. And, and I think that's the way that we're going to have to deal with this crisis. And, and, and we can always come back after we take the time to thoroughly study it and bring up an ordinance again when we know more about it.
So I think we have the ability to walk and chew gum at the same time. I'm still looking for something that's going to protect the property owners. This doesn't eliminate anti-camping, or eliminate camping in the entire city. There's spaces. We have maps that were delivered to us that show where camping could be allowed as we continue to tackle this problem. You look all over the country, this, this isn't tackled overnight. But I do know that we can offer protection to the 67,000-plus citizens that live in the city and have them protect their property rights. I know we can do that tonight, and I like your idea. If it doesn't work like we intended, we have the right to go back and go change it. But at least we have something on the books that's used as a tool. Police officers don't have to necessarily arrest them when they come across a situation that deals with anti-camping in these areas. Everyone keeps bringing that up. The police chief, if you remember, spoke the first time and gave his opinion on the original ordinance before it was amended. They have discretion. An officer in the field has total discretion to do whatever he sees appropriate. He can make the arrest, or he can give them a warning, ask them, you know, "Do you help? Need some help getting to another location where there is camping allowed?" When you get pulled over for a speeding ticket, you don't get arrested. They have that right to arrest you then. You might get a ticket, you might get a warning. But, but the point is, if they're released, they can go right back to the same place in the neighborhood and be picked up again, and it's that same revolving door. There is no real mechanism to, that sticks with the laws. We're going to have to work on that with the nonprofits. I personally do not think that it's the city government's responsibility to take care of people's mental health needs. We have no experts in the city, not in the city government, not in anybody sitting up here that deals with mental health. We're not going to solve this issue, but as, as a government.
Well, we have nonprofits, we have Gulf Bend funding mental health officers.
That's Gulf Bend.
That's right.
We can help put together a coalition to, to meet and talk about it, and maybe lead them down a path, but still, how are you protecting the 67,000 residents?
But how are you protecting them if this person could be right back in the same spot?
I know right now, we have no tool to do anything.
And this person, you're making the assumption that this person that you're talking about is a mentally ill person that would pass, that would fail that test.
No, even, even a person who is put in that's not mentally ill, if they're indigent, they will be magistrate it out in 12 to 24 hours. Is that correct, Chief? So it's not just.
For the record, the chief said yes, sir.
Yes. So it's, 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 it's anybody. If they're indigent, they will be magistrate it out on a personal bond, and they will be on the street again.
Well, I agree with Councilman Bachnight. We can walk and chew gum at the same time. This, and you said something about keeping the focus. Since we started this discussion, our focus has gone to affordable housing, our focus has gone to the mentally ill, our focus has gone to solving homelessness, our focus has gone to camping. I'm hearing from constituents who are concerned that we turn into another Los Angeles. Our focus is all over the place, and now you want to broaden our focus and add panhandling. I agree, I want to do something about those things. But my focus with this ordinance is an anti-camping ordinance that I hope can be enforced where appropriate. And I don't see any reason to wait to put it on the books. I'm not done with this conversation. None of us are. But I'm ready to move on, on this ordinance.
This ordinance isn't there to solve homelessness. That's not what this is, this ordinance is about. This is to protect the health, safety of the residents in their residential areas in the historic district. That's what this is about. It stops someone, okay.
For 24 hours.
No, it doesn't. It doesn't stop anybody.
I didn't finish that thought. We have, we have items on the books right now, all right? Littering, dumping, defecating, and urinating in public, right? Video evidence has been told that's not good enough. Would you agree that littering is a, an offense in our ordinances?
Well.
Would you agree?
Yes.
Okay, well, there's been a man that's been living for the last two to three weeks on Crestwood that has a bigger and bigger pile of litter every day. We're still not addressing it. You'd said you wanted to look at those types of ordinances when addressing homelessness. Why aren't we using what we have? We're not.
Well, we, we do have other laws on the books. I was mentioning at the last meeting, people were knocking on windows and stuff. Well, that's trespassing. So those are.
Well, I've heard that the lady that's downtown was found in someone's swimming pool.
So, you know, those are trespassing ordinance. There, there are laws that have more.
It's still not getting her out of the area. I'm sorry, I'm, I don't know how better to explain it, except that I'm looking out for the other 67,000-plus and trying to put something to protect them while at the same time providing a place for the homeless to camp while we try to address the issue of homelessness.
And, and you say you're going to provide a place for the homeless to camp?
There's a map here that shows exactly the same thing you got in front of you. Green ones are not, are allowed by this ordinance, brown ones aren't. Everybody has that map.
So you're just moving them?
Yes. I'm moving them out of primary residential areas and historic areas. Exactly right, that's what this is doing. It is not a solution to homelessness. Never was presented as such. Everybody gets up and speaks, tries to say that that's what we're trying to do, criminalize homelessness. No, we're trying to provide a way that we can all civilly live together when a certain segment of the population chooses not to be civil and follow civility. And so for me, you have to put something on the books to enforce that civility.
But once again, you can take them, arrest them, they can be back on the street in 24 hours and go back to the same place they were in the area that you've said you can't camp in, and the cycle just starts over again.
Doing nothing accomplishes nothing.
This is nothing. This ordinance is nothing.
No, absolutely not.
Why is this ordinance any better? You say the ordinances are not being enforced that we have. The police chief said that this is a revolving door.
We do not even have the ability to say, "Can you please move along right now?" It's, we don't have that ability.
I can say, "Please move along."
No, no stick behind it.
There's no bite to it.
If they come back, this ordinance doesn't solve that. It doesn't solve them coming back.
Got to try something, Mark. I'm sorry.
Well, first of all, the, the thing I propose is second and third reading, and we, we're debating the actual ordinance, and I think we should be discussing if this is the second reading or the third reading.
So if I may.
Well, oh, I was going to say, Mark, we've, we've talked about this ad nauseam up here. And I appreciate the fact that this has probably spurred a lot more conversation in regard to homelessness, and hopefully there's some momentum behind it. And there are some answers and solutions to there, but, but this is, like Councilman Bachnight said, a solution for the 67,000 other people of Victoria. So I'm ready to vote.
So just for clarification for everyone in the audience and for everyone on TV, this is, we're actually, we still have a motion and a second to split the second and the third vote on the floor, which we need to vote on. Once that is done, yes.
Call the question.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just briefly, procedurally.
Procedurally, if, once, if, if they are split, then there can still be discussion about the ordinance itself. Amendments can still be made, because we do still have to approve the actual ordinance. If they are not split, then this, in fact, is our second reading. We can still discuss it, we can still amend it, but that will be your, your last time to do that up here.
And, and if it does return to that discussion, know that I would like to provide some feedback related to a recommendation on an amendment to, to the ordinance as presented, that only you have the authority to amend, since you already voted on it for the first reading.
So to the point, any more discussion on the second and third reading? It's been a motion to split them into this being the second reading, and then we deal with it on the third reading separately. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
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 So they are split into a second and third reading?
Yes.
So it returns.
And now there's a motion on the floor.
Well, it returns to the discussion.
Right.
Which still would need a vote. And at this point, I'd like to throw out that in the spirit of the mayor's comments at the previous meeting, talking about, let's really put some thought into the implementation aspect of the ordinance, I wanted to recommend that an amendment be made to remove the reference to defining homelessness as people who live in vehicles, because there is a constituency that is involved from a, with the school district that relies on that, and I don't think that was the original sort of intent or the. think that was the original sort of intent or the original audience, for lack of a better term, that we were trying to include in this ordinance. So I'd like to recommend that council make, make a motion to amend it to eliminate that reference, and then also eliminate a reference to some cooking procedures, and just keep it just flat out the way that Dr. Young had initially proposed it. Allison actually has copies of what that potential amendment would look like, and so we can distribute those. But again, since council officially voted on the first reading at the last meeting, only council has the ability to officially amend it.
And I don't think any of those provisions were in the Sugar Land ordinance.
Correct. And if you recall from Thomas's presentation, when he brought this forward at the last meeting, he included some additional language solely for discussion's sake, but at the last meeting, you know, things happened so quickly that we didn't even get a chance to really talk through some of these things that Thomas had incorporated. So you could see how it's redlined to eliminate the reference of a vehicle and eliminate the carry-on cooking activities component to it, and strictly focus on the sleeping aspect and the tents and the sheltering, which I believe was Dr. Young's original intent.
I would like to move that we do the following amendment, however you wanna word that.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
I would like to amend it as the city manager has suggested.
Okay. So you're making a motion to amend it?
Who have a motion to amend?
I have a motion to amend.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second for the second discussion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we amend the original ordinance that was passed the last time.
And let me elaborate a little bit on, on that impact. So through, through the meeting the mayor and I had with the executive board of the Homeless Coalition, there was a representative there of the school district, and I forget the technical term off the top of my head, but there's a population of students that are considered homeless.
McKinvento.
There you go. McKinvento, and it's a substantial number. It was 900, it was close to 900 students. But some of these situations are as follows, which is, a kid might be sleeping at a friend's house, and the parent will be sleeping in a vehicle outside while the son or daughter is sleeping with their friend. And so we followed up after the approval of the first reading, and I believe Thomas determined that there was about 20 to 25 families that would be impacted that currently are in that situation of sleeping in vehicles. And so that was a population that we thought maybe wasn't necessarily the intended group to be affected. I really don't know how else to describe that, and hence our recommendation on eliminating that component of it.
You're saying it's not parked on private property?
Correct. It's on the street.
It's on the street. And it's not like mobile homes and campers and stuff like that?
Well, how do, how do you address it from a mobile home standpoint?
Yeah, that'd be something different.
That'd be a whole--
Yeah, that'd be something different. That'd probably be a separate ordinance, an inclusion in something different. I know that there's, had, there was a recommendation brought forward by a, by a resident at the last meeting or two meetings ago regarding that matter. And if that's something that council would like us to explore further, we can certainly do that, but it would be under a separate amendment to an existing ordinance, because we already have in our code language that prohibits that from occurring during a certain amount of time period. So that change to address that issue would be amending the existing code that addresses that, as opposed to adding something completely new, which is what we're doing here.
Okay. And can you elaborate on the cooking activities portion?
Yeah, that was simply just something that, again, it really hadn't been discussed, and so we didn't wanna assume without discussion that council, nobody on council had brought forward literally, let's address people cooking and right away. And so I just wanted to make sure through this exercise that we weren't just continuing the ordinance without actually clearly identifying the things that Thomas had added.
Well, I'm--
I could, I could tell you, just, I realize we don't have the situation now, but one of the things that in other communities I've been exposed, posed to related to cooking is that sometimes families wanna have block parties and end up, you know, cooking in the front yard, maybe on the sidewalk, or National Night Out event, or maybe during Halloween, somebody wants to put something elaborate in the front, in the front driveway slash sidewalk, and so, you know, there's so many--
Talking about it in their neighborhood.
I'm sorry?
You're talking about in their neighborhood?
Correct.
In their neighborhood, okay.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, yeah, obviously, yeah, yeah. I mean, I'll go to your house and cook in your driveway, I guess.
As long as it tastes good, and I can have--
But, you know, there's so, there are so many mundane situations that, you know, without really, you know, we just figured, let's just eliminate that. But obviously, if council wants to leave it, we can certainly leave it.
Well, I'm looking, it begins with camp means to use a designated place for living accommodation purposes. So the examples that you gave of Halloween or having a block party don't really come into this. So I, I can't think of a situation where carrying on cooking activities would be something that I would, would want to occur in these areas that we're talking about. I'm, and I'm gonna let you talk in a sec, but I, just in number C, it continues to bother me, shouldn't it say using any tents, comma, shelter, or other structures? Because right now it reads using any tents shelter. That's just a little technical thing, but in 2C, there should be a comma there.
Yes, ma'am, we can fix that.
Scrivener.
Yeah, yeah. That wouldn't require any--
The only thing--
Any motion or anything.
All right, so I've made my statement about the cooking and--
Let me ask a question of you, Ms. Scott, using your background. Because of that definition in 2A2, it says, but not limited to any of the following. So even if we struck out carrying on cooking activities, if it was carried on in the spirit of the living accommodation purposes, couldn't it still be considered as not, not being allowed?
We'll ask the city attorney. I would say probably so, but it's a whole lot better if it's spelled out.
I, I agree.
So how exactly are you, are you recommending that we word that?
Well, he's, he's just asking, because it says including or but not limited to, that if we were to eliminate carrying on cooking, could it be expanded in interpretation to include that because of the language, but not limited to any of the, for such purposes, such as, but not limited to?
We can--
No, I'm just, it's just a question on, if it was accepted as an amendment, couldn't it still be an indication of a living accommodation? Because it's not limited to just the ones we list?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. From that standpoint, I could probably live with it. I'd rather it be in there, but--
I think procedurally, I think we're in discussion phase of a motion to accept this amendment, correct?
Yes.
And I'm, I'm okay with the vehicle part, and so I don't know procedurally how everybody else feels, but then I guess procedurally we would vote down this amendment and then come back with another one, because I'd like to leave the cooking in there, but I'm okay with--
You can amend the amendments.
Addend the amendment.
Addend the amendment, okay. Well, all right.
First, the amendment's gotta pass.
This must be very fun for those watching on TV.
The amendment or the amendment's gotta pass, and then you'd pass the amendment.
Right. Okay, so we're--
To go back to the amendment.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're in, we're in an amendment, and so I'd like to move that we instead leave E, carrying on cooking activities included in the definition of camp.
Second.
Okay, so we have--
We have an amendment to the amendment.
Amendment to the amendment to include E, carrying on cooking activities.
But striking the vehicle.
Because that's the amendment, right.
So any discussion on that? If not, then all those in favor of the amendment to the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
So now we go to the amendment.
Can I say the mayor voted? I didn't hear him, I'm sorry.
I voted for him. Removing the vehicle.
So now we go to the amendment, which now is to eliminate, in, within C, eliminate the reference to vehicle, which would then allow vehicles.
Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
That would be the only correction.
Yeah, the amendment to the amendment was to--
Include carrying on--
Correct. The amendment to the amendment was to change that motion by Councilman Lofgren to reincorporate carrying on cooking activities, which passed. So now we're back to that original motion by Councilman Lofgren with the amended version, which only removes vehicle. And so that's what we need to be called to question at this point.
So any further discussion on that? Here, now, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now we're back to the original motion.
Correct. Discussion phase of the original motion for the second reading.
I'd like to make a motion, if I can do that now. Because of the correspondence tonight, the people speaking, because of the correspondence we received via email, because of the confusion of homelessness, camping, affordable housing, because of the confusion on what the police chief has said, because of the comments from the sheriff, I'd like to table this till September 17th, the second meeting of September. Give me, give us some times, to, some time to research. What's really, what are we voting on? And what does the police chief really mean? What does the sheriff officer, sheriff of Victoria County really mean? And now we've got some more amendments, and now we have a map that outlines areas that may or may not be accurate, I've got, I have question on. I'd like to table it, make a motion to table it till September 17th to slow down, because this is really getting confusing.
I'd like to second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded to--
Table the topic.
Table this discussion until the September 17th meeting, picking up with, again with the second reading, correct?
Yes.
Correct. If successfully tabled, it would just stop it--
Right now.
Right now, and table it.
When we, but, by that, when we come back on, if it is tabled right now, and we come back, we will still have the amendment that's been approved to the amendment that will need to be voted on at the end of September.
Before they approve those--
We've approved the first one, we need, yeah.
So we're just simply tabling this until a time certain?
Yes, sir.
It would be, it would be tabling the second reading until the second meeting in September.
So we can, so we can gather more data, determine if what's being said does pertain to anti-camping, like homelessness and affordable housing, and also, I'd like to see what the police chief has to say again, and what the sheriff of Victoria County has to say again, because it's really confusing, it's really become cluttered. The, the main topic, the main issue, has really been cluttered up.
That's where I think that we need to stay laser-focused in what this ordinance did and not get spider-webed out.
Well, it did.
Well, I know, but--
Every different direction.
Again, bring it back to what it is.
Affordable housing, to homeless, to criminalizing people.
We have another reading already, as it is.
I couldn't hear you.
We, we have another reading already, because we've now split it into--
Well, either a vote on it, yes or no?
Well, we do have a motion on the floor to--
I think it was seconded.
And seconded--
It was, but it's--
So is there any more discussion on that motion to table? If not, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of tabling, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, the motion is, the second reading is tabled until September 17th.
And just, but we now, the amendment's done, right?
Yes, yes, yes. We start with that amendment.
The amendment is done, start there.
We start with the, with the ordinance, not with the amendment.
The amendment's already done.
Correct.
Right. Yeah, the amended ordinance. It's already been amended.
Yes, sir.
And--
We're not done with the meeting, mayor.
Well--
We still have more.
Sometimes you feel like that. Well, these are tough decisions, and I wanna commend this council for taking the time to really discuss these things. I mean, it's not easy. And, you know, we've all heard from people, and I respect each and every one of your opinion very much, and so there's no, it's tough. That's all I'll say.
I will give a plug to Ms. Sparkman with Southbridge Street Live. She had a roundtable with a lot of the players in this, and it was a, it was a good roundtable for an education standpoint.
And, and, and really, the discussion has started in our city, and I think we'll end up learning more, and we'll tackle it again. We're not gonna shirk it, we're gonna tackle it again, so. Anyway, so now we will move on to item E2.
Item E2 is a resolution appointing and/or reappointing members to the planning commission and declaring an effective date, to which I believe there is a substituted resolution by our city secretary.
Yes, the legal department has prepared a substitute resolution. We did have another resignation from this board late last week. B.J. Davis resigned from the board, and we've added his position, making four positions now open on the board, three of which will be full terms of three years, and the last one would fill his vacancy, that, so that appointment would only be until August of 2021. So we will have to differentiate when we vote the four people in, which person will end up with the shorter term.
So we've decided that in order to do that, to make this even more confusing for everybody, we're going to have two votes for the planning commission. You have nine candidates and four spots.
Wow.
Your first spot, your first vote will be to pick your top four. Out of those top four, we will then revote and pick one of those to be designated on the, the term that ends in 2019. So three of them will, I mean, in 2021. So your top three will end in 2022, and then your fourth out of those top four will end in 2021. But we're gonna vote one and then vote the other. Make sense? Okay.
I have a clarification. There's actually 10 candidates, because there was an additional one added.
We add another one, yes.
Brian Ferguson.
Okay.
So he's 10 candidates for planning commission.
Pick your top four. He is--
So out of those top four, we couldn't get the one that has the least votes to go to, instead of having two votes?
I'm sorry?
Were we having two votes, you said?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So why are we voting on four instead of three and then one?
If you would prefer to, we vote, this is how we've done it traditionally, and so that's how the mayor and I discussed it earlier.
That's what I was told, is the way we've always done.
Okay, that's fine. So we pick four, and then we go--
And if council has a preference for a different process, it's completely up to you. These are your appointees, so don't feel that you have to follow the process that's been followed in the past. It's 100% your control on how you want to go about appointments.
And Gail Hoad and Jill Trevino are currently serving and have both asked to be reappointed.
Yes, ma'am.
And they're part of the four.
And if each, yes. And if each council member, before you get started, could write your name on your ballot so that we know which one belongs to whom.
We don't have to number it this time, right? Like we sometimes do?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I vote? No, just kidding.
I voted, just won't be counted.
Yeah, there you go.
It's called a hanging trend.
Yeah.
No, I'm gonna give the ballots. Yeah.
Just a question. Didn't we already have somebody that got appointed to another commission in the consent agenda? Number six?
Yes, ma'am. Destiny Nicole Hoad was appointed to the library commission. She had submitted the application for this one as well.
So do we scratch her off, or?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. She could apply for both.
She could technically be on both, if that's what council would like.
Okay. He would, if y'all will give me one second.
Got your name on it? You don't have to fold it.
Public.
Well, I tally you up.
Now you turn around and go over to April. That's what Thomas always does.
There you go, on this next one.
I don't, I don't-- I was gonna say, I think I can do it here. I was gonna say, I think I can do it here. Well, I made it confusing enough for y'all.
I can read all the chemicals.
Do we have Jeopardy music you can play on the TV?
Put your phone off.
Oh, no, no, that's volver, volver.
You can pull this off in one vote, I'm going to be really impressed.
Well, prepare to be impressed.
Right.
Your top four are Brittany Dearlam, Vanessa Hicks Callaway, Gail Hoad, and Jill Trevino. So of those four, I need you to now vote one, or because of the way that the votes happen to turn out, I will propose this to council, that there is, there are three names that have the same number of votes, one name that does have one less. You can go ahead and if, agree that that will be your fourth person to move to the 2021 ballot, because your votes happened to work out that way.
I'm not sure about that. I mean, I'd like to reappoint the ones that are qualified and are currently serving for full terms.
Can't we just?
Can.
It would be a new member.
It's a new member.
It's a new member.
I mean, that, with that information, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Is council in agreement with that?
Yes.
I think so, yes.
Okay, so the...
So...
Yes, if I could get a motion to designate, you want them?
Yes. Name the three that are full terms and the one that's...
The, the last one was for August 2021, right? So I make, I move to approve item E2 with the names filled in for the August 2022 term expirations, as Vanessa Hicks Callaway, Gail Hoad, and Jill Trevino, and the August 2021 term expiration as Brittany Dearlam.
The motion?
A second.
A second.
Been moved and seconded.
Appreciate they're willing to serve.
Any discussion since it was a vote, so.
Well, I appreciate, I wanted to, I appreciate all 10 people. We had a, a long list of...
Yes.
Highly qualified candidates from this standpoint, and it's much appreciated. This is service, and oftentimes, we don't have that applicant pool, so again, it's a good problem to have from the city of Victoria.
I agree with you, because reading the, the resumes was really impressive. So thank you, the public, for stepping forward.
I'd like to also commend, well, we better vote first, and then I'll say it.
So all those, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's not only all ladies, but I believe that makes a majority on the Planning Commission, so we're being very inclusive.
Yes.
Okay, on to item E3, is a resolution appointing new members to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals and declaring an effective date. And again, I believe that we have a substitute resolution on this item as well.
Yes, we do have substitute resolution as well, because B.J. Davis also served on the Board of Adjustments and Appeals, and also resigned from this board late last week. So that opens up, his position on this board is very particular about who can serve, and he served as the residential building contractor. So we had four applicants to specifically serve as a residential building contractor. So we're going to vote for a commercial building contractor, an engineer, and a residential building contractor.
So the way this is going to work, council, is that we have three different votes to make. For the commercial builder contractor, you have two options, and each of you will write your name on the ballot, and then vote on those.
Can I do a little campaigning?
I'm sorry?
I, I know all of these gentlemen, and they're all very fine builders. Mr. Chalupka is a home inspector as well as a builder, and since this is the Board of Adjustments and Appeals, I find that he may have additional qualifications that are useful.
And what you're voting on right now is the commercial builder contractor.
Okay.
Do we need to run these through PricewaterhouseCoopers?
With a vote of five to two, it is Bob Alvarez for the commercial building contractor position. I'm going to write Bob Alvarez into the resolution.
That's a separate resolution for that one, now.
Yes.
There's a separate resolution for each?
There's a separate spot for each of them.
So we'll deal with that, okay.
Yeah, we have, we've only done one so far. And then, now we're going to vote on the residential contractor, which you have four options on, and then the top vote getter will be your person to fill that particular spot. Again, please write your names on the ballots.
Aren't we missing a couple on this? Oh, no, we're not, never mind. I found it, reading slow.
Is that all of them? Okay, and your new residential contractor for the Boards of Adjustments and Appeals is Roland Rodriguez, and I will write that into that spot of the resolution. And then finally, for the spot of engineer, you only have one option. It is, we had an application from Leah Walden, so if everyone is in agreement, I will write her name in, and then y'all can vote on that one.
I move to approve...
Oh, did we lose someone?
I'll move to approve item E3 with Bob Alvarez filled in as a commercial building contractor, Leah Walden as the engineer, and Roland Rodriguez as the residential building contractor, with all terms expiring March 4th, 2020.
A second.
Been moved and seconded, accept that, that list of people? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Okay, we're done voting.
Not quite.
Uh, Mayor, would you let me wait till Ms. Solis gets back?
Yes, let's do that, please. Let's do what? Wait for Ms. Solis to return. We are on item E4.
E4 is a resolution approving the Victoria Sales Tax Development Corporation's US-59 Water and Sewer Extension Project and declaring an effective date.
A move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve item E4, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
E5 is a, E5 is a resolution hearing an appeal from property owner Jeffrey Moore on a decision rendered by the Buildings and, Building and Standards Commission during their regularly scheduled meeting on July 25th, 2019, ordering the demolition of an unsafe structure located at 613 West Brazos Street, rendering a final decision to sustain or overturn the commissioner's order and declaring an effective date.
A move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item E5. Any discussion? So we're voting to approve...
Enforcing the ordinance?
Enforcing the...
Enforcing what the city has decided. To go ahead with the demolition.
I can read it.
Yeah, read it again.
Do you want me to read the resolution to you, just for clarification? What you're resolving today is that the, actually, that the, the city council hereby denies the appeal and sustains the Building and Standards Commission order to demolish the structure at 613 West Brazos Street owned by Jeffrey Moore. So by voting, by voting in favor of this, you would be, you would be denying the appeal and voting in favor to demolish.
I wanted to clarify this. All right, it's been moved and seconded to deny the appeal. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Item E6 is a resolution hearing an appeal from property owner Jeffrey Moore on a decision rendered by the Buildings and Standards Commission during their regularly scheduled meeting on July 25th, 2019, ordering the demolition of an unsafe structure located at 1101 North Daleon Street, rendering a final decision to sustain or overturn the commission's order and declaring an effective date.
Move to approve item E6.
Second.
Been a motion and seconded to approve item E6. Oh, any other discussion?
We get some discussion from, I guess, Julie Silberm? Or whoever's?
Yes, sir.
What was the, the deciding factor to agree with the commission's order?
So the property, the, the Building Standards Commission has to first declare whether a property is safe or unsafe. In this instance, they declared that it was unsafe. Once they make the declaration that it's unsafe, then they have two routes to go. They can order for the property to be repaired or demolished. In this case, they ordered that the property was over 50% of its value damaged, and therefore it goes to an automatic demolition. And so the deciding factor for the commission was the amount of damage to the property is, again, over 50% of its value, so they ordered it to be demolished.
I, I can say, I was on that commission for many, many years, and chaired it for many years toward the end, and this commission doesn't make these recommendations lightly. There's a lot of long discussion about it, and sometimes it's very, very emotional, too, in some of the circumstances. So, you know, I, I'm just telling you that these decisions by that commission are not made lightly. So it's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Item E7 is a resolution approving the continued collection of a bingo prize fee on bingo games conducted within city limits and declaring an effective date.
So move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve item E7. Any discussion on this matter?
I can ask a question. This has been in the books since 1983, and it's always been 1%? It's, we don't have the ability to raise it?
No, ma'am, it's always been 1%.
But we can't raise it?
No.
Okay, because of statute?
Yes, ma'am, there was a new statute the passage year, but it stayed the same amount.
It stayed the same amount, okay, that's fine, just asking.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Item E8 is a resolution finding that AEP Texas Inc.'s requested increase in its electric transmission and distribution rates and charges within the city should be denied, finding that the city's reasonable rate case expenses shall be reimbursed by the company, finding that the meeting at which this resolution is passed is open to the public as required by law, requiring notice of this resolution to the company and legal counsel, and declaring an effective date.
So move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve item E8. Any discussion?
Could you explain to me what the impact is of this? If we, or once we vote that their rates are unreasonable, what, what does that do for us?
That allows us to grant the Electric Commission, the Utility Commission, to go back and negotiate with AEP to actually get us better rates going forward. If we agreed to them as they were, then we wouldn't have that, that leverage, but this allows us to go back to them and, and say, we're going to deny these, and then they take a bunch of cities that are within this, this group that we're in, and they go back and they negotiate on our behalf. So it allows us better rates.
Thank you.
Can you clarify, number three, where it says the city's reasonable rate case expenses shall be reimbursed by AEP Texas within 30 days of presentation of an invoice to AEP Texas? So why would we get to be reimbursed? Are they going to charges the fees, and then we get reimbursed while they have their discussions? Or why is that in there?
We'll be reimbursed by AEP Texas within 30 days, is what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
That means that the, that our legal counsel will get, they will reimburse our, our counsel the rates they're charged.
So it's actually a third-party law firm that spearheads this exercise? And so that's the law firm that would get paid by AEP?
Okay. I thought it was talking about the rate.
So it's cost neutral for all of the cities that are going through this process?
Don't they typically represent other cities as well?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
So it's not a, it's not a reimbursement to us.
No, ma'am, it's for...
Yeah, it's for that third party.
More importantly, not an expense to us.
Right.
Well, that's true.
No, good question, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of item E8?
Aye.
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 Opposed, same sign?
It's pretty disjointed.
All right, we'll move into city manager reports, and it's your show.
Okay, yeah, we're going to shift this, this around, and so I'll toss it over to April to provide her update.
Okay, I just have a brief report on the appointments to the Golden Crescent Regional Planning Commission. Currently, the city, as a member of that organization, is allowed to elect two council members to serve in the General Assembly, and then one of those two council members also serves on the Board of Directors. Mayor Protem Solis currently serves on their executive committee, and it was explained to me by Golden Crescent Regional Planning Commission's Danielle Warazekka, that because she serves on that executive committee, we don't actually have to appoint her to the Board of Directors of General Assembly, Mayor, she will serve on the executive committee until she's replaced. So I believe you're the first vice president, is that correct, Ms. Solis? At this time, so she's working her way up through that board. So we are, the ordinance that will, or the resolution rather, that will be presented next week, will need to appoint two council members. Both council members will be appointed to the General Assembly, and one person will be appointed also to the Board of Directors. Now, currently, Councilman Bautnait serves on only the General Assembly for us, and he has expressed interest in still serving in that capacity, but we do need a second council member to serve on, on the General Assembly and the Board of Directors. Now, General Assembly meets simply once a year unless called more by the president, and the Board of Directors meets monthly. And then the resolution will also include an endorsement of Mayor Protem Solis's membership to the executive committee.
Mr. Lofgren, are you interested?
I volunteer.
Okay, he volunteered.
So next time, we'll bring back a resolution appointing Mr. Bautnait to the General Assembly, and Mr. Lofgren to the General Assembly and Board of Directors, and supporting Ms. Solis's role.
We tried to do it last meeting.
That's why you waited to find the right, right spot.
Thank you. Garza, your show.
All right. So before we move on to some of the other items, I want to make a brief, brief comment slash announcement, brief shout-out. So this, today, tonight is our last regular city council meeting, where we'll have our communications director, OC Garza, present. We, of course, have a, a public hearing next week, but I'm sure there's more people tuning in tonight than there will be next week, and so I think it's prudent for us to acknowledge his 18 years of service to us. He's been, he's been our first and only communications director, and so he's built it from the ground up. He's, he was also served as the first tourism director when the city took that over from the Chamber of Commerce, and so he's been instrumental in building both of those departments for us, and definitely setting the foundation for us to continue in his example and in his ways. And so I just want to publicly thank you for years of service, and I think he certainly is worthy of a round of applause in, in any words that anybody else might have. We'll do it again next week. You want to say anything? Yeah, hey.
Communication director didn't want to talk?
Never ask a communications person if they want to say anything. I'll just say, it has been an honor, working not only with various mayors in my career, city council members, and a great team of city staff throughout my career. I'm very excited about, I think, the future of council, future of the city, new city manager, new mayor. It's going to be exciting to see, and I look forward to watching it from being a citizen only. So, thank y'all very much, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, OC.
Your smile and your personality is going to be missed greatly. Appreciate you.
And he's been smiling even more now. Ever since his announcement. He's showing up late to meetings. He just doesn't, he's just happy. Oh, got it, got it. All right. So we committed at the last meeting that we would come prepared with some options and some educational materials related to the proposed property tax rate. There's a lot of information that was included in your read file so that you can take home and continue to read up on it and digest it. Fortunately, no decisions are going to be made tonight, so this is merely just us providing this information to you. But before we get into some of the proposals that we want to put forth for discussion and for consideration, I want to take a step back and show you some historical data and talk a little bit about the actions that council have taken in the past, just for context, so the council is better educated and aware of the implications, not only short-term but long-term, as it relates to the property tax rate. And I'll, just briefly, I'm also going to briefly talk on Senate Bill Two. At the last meeting, when the mayor made the motion to set the property tax rate, there was mentioned on his rationale related to investment in infrastructure, but then also related to Senate Bill Two and the impact that might have. So I'll briefly touch on that as well. From a 10-year tax rate history, this is just intended to show you a snapshot of the evolution, if you will, of our tax rate. Of course, tax rates go up and down, and so I just want to show that to you so you're aware of that. More telling is probably the next slide that dives into the years that we've stayed at an effective tax rate, the years where it's been under, the years that it's been over. Some of you have been on council for some of these decisions, so you know that more often than not, they're typically associated with public safety investments or infrastructure-related investments. But this is intended to show you the last 10-year period, so you could see what has been more or less the policy direction from council. Even though there has been some years that the tax rate has gone in over, you could see how it's been very minimal to a degree. What's not included in this PowerPoint, but that it's included in your packet that I want to call special attention to, is another Excel document that has baby blue attached to it. But this was intended to go through an exercise showing what would have happened if during this entire 10-year period, the tax rate would have been increased to that 5% that our ordinance allows us to? And so that information is in your packet. But what's interesting is that if that would have occurred over the last 10-year period, we would have almost $5 million in our operational budget today. And so I think that's very important for council to digest, the cumulative impact that property tax decisions have over time. And if you look at the tax rate for 2019, which was .6224, and you connect, and you relate it to the tax rate that would be in existence currently, if we would have followed that 5% increase for the last 10-year period, that tax rate would be, would have been .6389, which is less than two cent difference. So again, the cumulative impact of property tax decisions are very substantial, and so I think it's important that council is aware of what has happened in the past, of what hasn't happened in the past, so that as you consider your decision and deliberate the property tax rate, we can not only be thinking about today's impact, but the impact of tomorrow, which of course leads, which of course leads us into the property tax rate that was proposed by the mayor. This slide shows a high-level overview of that. The proposed tax rate is .6115. We've split it out between the MNO tax rate and debt tax rate. As a point of reference, the fiscal year 19 tax rate is .6224. So even though the proposal was to go above the effective, it's still a lower tax rate than what was in existence in fiscal year 2019. And you could see that at the very bottom. Very minimal, but nonetheless, it's a decrease. Very quickly, on Senate Bill Two, you may or may not be receiving these TML news clippings, but if you have, you've noticed that a lot of cities are taking the approach of increasing their property tax revenue by the full 8% that currently state law allows you to. That is because when Senate Bill goes into, Senate Bill Two goes into effect, which for us will take into effect in consideration for fiscal year 21, it'll limit our ability to increase that. So as most of you are aware, the state rollback rate is 8%. And as, again, most everybody is aware, we have a city ordinance that limits, that has that a little lower, at 5%. Currently, under the law, if, for whatever reason, the city were to go above the state rollback rate, which is 8%, which of course we wouldn't, because local, it's less, but if that were to happen, citizens here or anywhere else would have the ability to petition to hold an election. Under Senate Bill Two, there are several things that change. For one, what we refer to as a rollback rate will no longer be called a rollback rate. They are legally changing the name of that to be known as the voter approval rate, and they're lowering it from 8% to 3.5%. And so it would even be lower than our local ordinance of 5%, which of course state would trump local, but I'm sure we'll address that at a later date anyway. And SB Two has a mandatory election anytime a city goes above that. So it used to be that citizens could petition for the election. SB Two would trigger an automatic election anytime a city or a public entity wants to go above that 3.5%. However, there is the ability under Senate Bill Two to utilize the component of unused increment rate to allow this three-year rolling cycle. And so if one year, as an example, we choose to increase it by 2%, we could bank 1.5% and the following year do a 5%. And so it's tricky and complex, but there are ways to bank unused increment to then capitalize off the next year or the year after that, but you can only bank for up to three years. There's more information in your packet. This is just a very high-level overview of the impact that Senate Bill Two is going to have. But again, because of this, a lot of cities are taking the approach of, let's increase to have our baseline before the 3.5 goes into effect as high as it could be. Now, to go a little bit into the options, we're presenting three major options for discussion. The first option on how to utilize the $746,000 that we would get additional would be to simply take a debt reduction approach. This particular option would cancel the $2 million bond sale that we typically do every year, that currently we have scheduled to occur this year. This option would just prevent that from happening, and we would instead get that $2 million through a combination of the new revenue and about $1.25 million from the Texas or past funds that we will be receiving later this year. So that's option one. Option two would be to invest that $740,000 into a one-time street project. I won't run through these. These are merely just to show you the ones that staff has worked on that would qualify, so to speak, to fit within that range of $740,000. I know that anytime we start talking about streets, it can lead to a lot of discussion. But what we mostly are interested in getting direction from is, if this is an option that council would like to pursue, if this is the option that council would like to pursue, we can always worry about trying to figure out specifically which project later, once we get into the fiscal year, since I realize that might lead to more in-depth discussion. But in principle, option two is to just take that money and apply it to a project. Option three is to enhance our preventative maintenance operation. Currently, you may or may not be aware that our public works department has had six vacancies for a number of years now. Some of these are in our street crews, some of them are in our stormwater crews. But all in all, what it does is that it creates a compression issue of backlog within public works to be able to address our needs. And so a big part of this proposal is to add some funding to increase the pay for some of these low-paying public works positions, so that we could focus on being fully staffed, so that staff can actually work on trying to catch up with some of these work orders. In the memo that's included in your packet that expands on this option, you'll read that currently public works has about 400 back order, work orders that are in back order, if you will. I kind of got confused in my tongue there for a second. But in any case, they're backlogged on that front. We've also currently have two pothole crews with two pro-patch trucks. Currently, with this setup, every city, every road in our community gets driven by one of these crews at least twice a year, which is obviously not as often as I think we all would like it to be. What also happens at times that adds to that dilemma is that oftentimes, we have special projects that come in or special requests for addressing certain things in certain parts of town, so we have to move and shuffle these crews around. They currently follow a very specific zone schedule. And so oftentimes, when we're pulling them from one side of town to another side of town, it puts that zone further back. And so what we're proposing is to literally hire another pothole crew along with another truck at that expense. We also are proposing in this preventative maintenance option to begin having an annual crack seal program. We currently do not have and have not invested in an annual crack seal program. Over the last 10-year period, the city has only invested about half a million dollars into crack seal, and it was in one year, and it was, I think, 2015. But really, this is a preventative maintenance practice, just like seal coating, that should be incorporated every year, so that we don't have to invest half a million dollars, you know, every so often. If it's something that we invest a little bit of money every year, we won't get so far behind. And so that's included in this option scenario. Also included in this is utilizing $200,000 to outsource some of this work to help us catch up with the backlog of work orders that we have. Now, again, these may include pothoses, may include cleaning drainage ditches, and so we want to make sure that in this option, we can catch up and then also be a little bit more proactive by being fully staffed and having an additional pothole crew. So what would be the tax rate impact? I know this is a question that several council members have asked. This slide is intended to represent that if the proposed tax rate goes into effect, what that impact would be. Of course, the column on the left shows the assessed value. The second column takes into account an increase of 4% because that's what we're seeing citywide in terms of valuations. And what you see in fiscal year 2019 is the existing property tax rate. And so the difference is at the rightmost column. And so for a property that has an assessed value of $300,000, the impact on them on an annual basis would be $41 estimated, of course. But that's to give you a sense of what the impact would be on properties.
If I might add, Garza, of that 749,000 roughly, only 555,000 is attributed to that tax rate, correct?
Sure, yes. Good clarification. Thank you. Thank you.
Does this were new money, and you explained it better than me?
Correct. Yeah, and at the last meeting, it was two meetings ago, I can't recall, but we, Gilbert explained that 550,000 would come from the increased tax rate, and the rest would come from growth.
Okay. Would that be the same increased tax on that growth? Or just straight growth?
It would apply across the board.
Okay, so you're, but you're just lumping that in to this number?
Correct. So we lumped both so that we could have a conversation on how we could use the 740,000, because the policy direction that the mayor proposed at the last meeting was for us to take new money that would be coming through the ad valorem process and allocate that towards infrastructure investment.
Oh, okay. I guess I didn't catch that part of it. I thought we...
And I think Mr. Bocknight asked if it had already been budgeted, and you told us it was not, correct?
The new? Correct, yeah. Gilbert clarified on that point. I don't know if you want to expand on that.
Back in June, I only assumed about $20,000. So I increased about $171,000. So that's 191.
In terms of next steps, we have a budget hearing next week, which we'll introduce, of course, the hearing for the budget, and then this is the rest of the schedule. As a reminder, we originally had August 22nd, this Thursday, as a public hearing. That no longer is taking place, so I just want to throw that out there. And at this point, we'd be happy to answer any questions. Again, this is intended to be informational to you. We obviously, as staff, need direction from council at some point, whether you want to have that discussion now or wait till next week, either is fine. But know that ultimately, staff would need direction on which option you'd like us to pursue, or if you want to pursue additional options, we're open to having that dialogue and discussion with you.
I'm forward for option three.
I was going to say, I need to study it, but option three really appeals to me. That's the, a part of our ongoing maintenance that's been lacking. I think that could really help us.
I think, I think they're all good options, but I like option three, too.
I think what option three honestly does, it helps us catch up, and we're not spending borrowed money on maintenance.
Okay, if we go with option three, we still have the text money that we can use for something else?
Correct.
And we could just tell you later?
And if you recall, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We can ask, or we can tell you what we want with that later?
Well, we were, my original plan was to wait until we actually received the money to be able to come forward and go through the details of that. There have been verbal commitments already in the past on what this money is expected to be utilized for. So for example, when the city created the OPEB, from my understanding, the commitment from the very beginning was for that annual contribution to come from these funds that we're getting from Tech dot. Another example of a verbal commitment that has been made in the past is one related to the matching to the grant that we're going to be eventually getting reimbursed for, that will redo the traffic signals and the traffic lights. So that's about $400,000 that upfront would come from these funds. So that's a verbal commitment that has been made in the past. I made the verbal commitment a few meetings ago about taking three to four million dollars of this to address Lone Tree Acres through a combination of drainage and the street. And so, but we're still working on some of these numbers. So my intention was to wait until we finalize all that. But in discussions with Gilbert, we felt comfortable verbally committing the 1.125 million dollars to help go towards us not issuing debt next year.
Well, you could, you could still reduce that issuance from two to...
700,000?
To 1.2.
Yeah.
You could still use that and only borrow 740,000 for capital-type improvements.
Right. And if council would like to see a combination of option one and option three, we can work on that and discuss that next week. But, you know, just throwing it out there.
Well, like you say, when we get the money, we can go back and address that 1.2 million dollars. So I would go with option three.
Yeah, and Gilbert, correct me if I'm wrong, but what would be the, or I guess I'm asking you, what would be the timeline of the issuance of that bond? Is it something that could be delayed? Or does it have, or?
The new money, the new money has to be done on the last day we build the tax rate.
Okay.
I have to have that bond sale approved before we approve the tax rate. So the early, the early, we know if we want to do this bond or if I need to modify, well, modify is irrelevant, if I need to know we're going to do it or not do it. The refund is irrelevant, because you already approve a pre- parameter ordinance there, so I can do that any given time. But here, we're talking about the new money, $2 million. But the drop date is September 17. But with that said, I still like a date at least two weeks before that, maybe at the last week of August or the 27th, say, no, we don't like that. We'll go with a full blown or, just let me know. But I like to know the date on the 27th, we're still interested in doing a new bond issue or not.
I heard a consensus on option three already.
Yeah.
So that's what I was hearing, too.
Okay, thank you so much for that part of it. Also, we're not done. So next, I'm going to ask James to come up and go through his departmental budget. IT in the past has not presented a budget presentation to you, but slowly but surely, I want us and you to get more exposed to other facets of our operation, and this is just a continuance of that. There are components in his budget that I think are worthy of discussion, so that you and the public are aware of what's in our IT budget for next year. We also have an executive session to discuss some MITI-related issues, and so we'll transition into that executive session shortly after James presents his budget. Thank you.
Okay. So we'll just do a quick overview, similar to what the previous budget presentations were. These are many of the services that we offer to the city employees, and I won't go through everyone, but you're going to sort of look at and see some of the services that we offer. From a security overview, we are also responsible for all application updates, the intrusion detection systems, fire alarm rotations, email security, network monitoring, network hardware patches, physical security, security monitoring, virus protection, of course, Windows security updates. From our infrastructure... From our infrastructure, we encompass, our network encompasses over 30 locations around the city. Those locations listed there all utilize, for the most part, fiber connections, and we have some that are actually using wireless backbone, but for the most of our locations are connected via a fiber network. Technology changes that impact multiple departments are included in IT's budgets. Those examples of those would be our phone system. Our phone system is something that everyone shares, so it goes across into our IT budget. All other technology charges are budgeted into respective departments. So for instance, if they have a computer that needs to be replaced, it will be incorporated into their budget. The city does utilize a five-year replacement cycle for all computers and servers, and of course, then our networking equipment is replaced at end of support. So those networking equipment is typically your routers, your switches, those that connect all the computers and printers connect to the equipment to communicate, those that connect, replace that end of support, that's usually seven to ten-year lifecycle on those. This is our proposed budget for fiscal 2019-20. You can see that on pay benefits, we had an increase of $3,400. Maintenance and operations went up 124,000. Capital took a decrease of 42,000. Our total budget increased 85,000. One-time expenses was $76,802, and our reoccurring budget was 8,600. So the one-time expenses for, was asset tracking software for $16,800, and then we are also designed, set for a website redesign for $60,000, which is $76,302. So the budget variances on personnel, $3,400 was increased the payroll due to baseline adjustments. Maintenance and operations took 124,000. That included the website redesign for $60,000 and also our maintenance increases in software for $62,000.
Is that website for the city?
Yes.
Okay.
That is for our VictoriaTX.org.
And I believe there was money approved in the budget last year
Yeah.
for the tourism page, right? Yeah, for their website. That hasn't been completed, but there was already money in the budget last year for the tourism site.
Done by a third party?
I'm sorry?
Is that done by a third party?
Typically, yes.
And it takes longer than a year to do? Do you know?
Yeah, it's a little more complicated than that. I, I don't know if, we'll see if you want to tackle that one. Might as well. You gotta earn your paycheck.
The Convention and Visitor Bureau manager, Joel Novasad, and myself went through a kind of review process of third-party website creators that kind of specialize in the kinds of things Convention and Visitor bureaus need. The process was started here just a few months ago, but they are making great progress. It should be, we're thinking online in the next 30 to 60 days, if I'm not mistaken. Yes.
Okay, and then capital was a decrease of 42,000. That was due to 2018, 2019, we upgraded switches and our IP phones. And that's briefly it, if there's any questions.
Since this budget has a website design upgrade for the entire city, and it's gonna, you know, if we approve the budget and it goes into effect October 1st, are we gonna expect it's gonna take 14 months to build a website for the city?
Sure. Maybe, maybe not. Well, I could tell you that on the city's website side, some work has already been done on that end. Oh, she's standing up again. But that same exercise of exploring vendors for the city website has already begun. That's something that I've been a big proponent of since I got here because I do think our website presence could be improved. We are leveraging some savings that we have in this year's budget, thanks to not having a runoff, so thank you for that, to also improve our agenda management software so that those two can be implemented together at the same time. Because I think we could really improve our level of accessibility when it comes to our council meetings and agendas on our website, and so those should be tackled together, and that's something staff's already working on. So I don't envision the VictoriaTexas.org website taking 14 months. But I will tell you from my experience in being involved with website redesigns that it is a very lengthy process because typically, even though you hire a third party to help you, content-wise, it's still very dependent on us. You know, a third party's not gonna come in here and tell Public Works what to have on their website. So they'll be dependent on working with Donald, on determining what needs to be on that website, be dependent on Donald's staff to produce that content, and that can take time since obviously everybody has their day-to-day jobs to worry about. So it can be a very lengthy process. It's not as simple as just buying a product off the shelf and plugging it in. So there's a lot of conversations that take place. I couldn't tell you, you know, why the tourism website process started just a few months ago as opposed to in the fall, but typically, website redesigns take a while.
So we had a big software upgrade five years ago, four years ago? You remember that, Dr. Young?
I do.
We were bringing all this extra functionality to the city's website and the billing utilities department platform. We were gonna have a really slick online permit process. None of those things have, I won't say none of those things, a lot of those things haven't come to fruition. What kind of assurances can we have that we're gonna get to the end of those projects and have a functional website at the end of this extra 120-something thousand?
Okay, so the software upgrade projects that you're mentioning were through the utility billing and then also through the planning on code enforcement with those permits. Those are actually, for lack of a better word, a plug-in to our existing website. So our website is basically, it's just a, when you go to there and you click on there, it's a redirect to that wherever it's being hosted at. So it's not going to, the solutions, and I'm not sure as far as on the utility billing, is that still a process that's in working?
That's completed.
It's been completed, so I'm not sure what we're missing on the other than, I think it was the, I think you were talking about the part as far as viewing the water bill is online.
Yeah, so part of, part of that is, I believe, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Donald, but at least on the utility side, we're at the implementation side of it. I think one of the pieces that has been missing has been a very robust rollout plan and effort, but the actual technical side of it, I think, has been completed, from my understanding.
That's correct. Right now, we're in the, in the final, we finished the testing phases of the parts you're talking about right now, the customer portal, and we're just trying to find out the best way right now to roll that out. And I think, I believe Michelle has reached out to PIO and we're working with them to come up with that rollout. So should be soon.
How long will that software last? It seems to me that it's always something new, and software has been very, very expensive up here when we've talked about things. Do we have any clue how long that utility billing software, if it's taken so long, we haven't rolled it out fully? I mean, is, how long is this good for?
No, the utility billing software that we bought several years ago, that's been rolled out in its entirety, and we get updates on it on an annual basis, sometimes on a monthly basis. So as long as those updates are still functioning and we're getting the functionality out of that software that we're looking for, I wouldn't anticipate that we're gonna make a big change.
And to clarify, clarify to make sure everybody's talking about the same thing, I think the piece, the component that you're speaking of, and I think that you're speaking of is the customer portal aspect of that rollout. And so the stuff on our end might be up and running, but that customer portal part of it is the one that hasn't been fully rolled out.
Yeah, the customer portal was one that was, if I remember right, it's budgeted for in this fiscal year, when we're in right now, and we've been working on that. One that you mentioned, it was, you said five years ago, that was something that was, that was our switch from the AS400-based utility billing software to the enhanced utility billing software package that we're using now.
Which is all backend stuff.
Yeah.
Maybe I'm thinking the four or five years ago was the planning, online permitting process that's just never really worked very smoothly. And we abandoned it at my office.
Yeah, I can't speak to the planning side, but the UBO one is being used. So it's what you get your bills on now.
Any further questions?
No.
No, I know what you mean. I'm gonna jump in here. The costs are astronomical, and I know that they're important, but the cost of, that we've spent on some software programs could have paid for Larry Lane, could have paid for other capital projects. Doesn't mean that they're not important, but it's frustrating up here to see the absolute dollar value on some things. And maybe we don't fully understand it, and I get that, and I'm sensitive to that.
Sure, yeah. Well, definitely software is something that's very costly, but I will tell you that it's difficult for us to really evaluate these things without really having a way to really produce data. You know, data was mentioned earlier on a different topic, but data is very important because one of the assets of utilizing technology for permits or other things is to alleviate some of that pressure, for lack of a better term, on our staff. And so while, yes, we're spending money on technology, one would hope that at least maybe it's preventing us from having the need to hire additional people because some of that load has been passed on to technology. I don't know what the numbers or what the data would back up, but I could tell you that typically, that's part of what goes into it. Of course, customer service, convenience, you know, all sorts of things go into it. But there is a component that says, well, let's offload some of this workload from staff by transitioning it online. And I couldn't tell you, and I don't know if Julie's here or not, oh, there you are, but I don't know if you could speak to the volume of usage that it has, because that might help bring some clarity or assurances that the investment has been worth it.
The biggest obstacle with our citizen access portal is the actual plan submittal process. The software was never designed or doesn't have a feature where you can submit the plans, and so we've only ever been able to actually utilize it for our MEP permits. Now, as far as customer usage, we have some loyal customers that really like it and others not so much. I think the part of it that it makes it a little bit difficult sometimes is it does tie into our GIS system, and so your addressing has to be pretty specific on what address you're entering into the system to make it work, and that can be frustrating at times if you don't quite understand how our addressing has to be so specific. But for MEPs, it does work. The larger, more complex plan reviews, it's really not set up well because we have to find, figure out some other way for the plans to be submitted, and we've had lots of conversations with James on those. Due to network security concerns and things, we haven't been able to integrate receiving those plans electronically.
Also, you can't upload your load calculations.
Right, the plan's middle part.
So you can't get, you can't get a mechanical permit online.
Yeah, I think you're, the plumbing and the, and electrical-
So we're down to electrical and plumbing is all we need.
Are definitely the most realized.
Energy code, you can't upload any files.
But are you taking electronic plans now?
No.
Because we very seldom, in our office, I can't tell you the last time we printed a set of plans. We distribute all of our plans to contractors and everything in a digital form.
Yeah.
It's just gone.
And cities have figured out a way to do it, and so if it's simply a matter of us finding a solution to whatever obstacles we might have, we wouldn't be the first to figure it out.
Right.
Now, I realize James has some concerns, and I'm sure he'll talk about an executive session related to cyber attacks and the risks involved with that. But if the expectation from council is that we have or fully maximize these software opportunities, and if there's a sense that we're not, then I could take that as an action item and develop some strategies or some efforts to, let's do that.
Mine is from a customer standpoint.
Right.
And I think we've talked about this before, where we need to make sure we are very customer-friendly.
Right.
And I see so many opportunities out there with some of these softwares, and frankly, I thought we were getting these functions in past upgrades that aren't there.
Right.
And to make things easier for the customer, if you have a leak in a water deal, you're able to get an alert just automatically because the system says, well, there hadn't been spending all that
Right.
much on water, and now it's, you know, 500, 600 gallons extra. What's going on? Did you, you know, there's so many things out there that I think we can be doing better from a customer service standpoint.
Agreed, agreed.
But by the same token, I think our, I'm not sure what the, what his concerns are, but certainly our population expects us to take precautions because you, not being customer-friendly to one is a whole lot different than the system being shut down, which is now not customer-friendly to anyone. So while I want to use the latest that we can, I want us to be smart about it and cautious.
I'd like to talk about the water bill. Can I get my water bill online? Just emailed to me. Every other utility bill I get is sent to.
Right.
But I get, it's sent to my house with an envelope, return envelope, and I throw it in the trash.
You can get it.
I get mine online.
Yeah.
I don't get mine online, and I don't think anybody, anybody I've asked who knows how to get it online.
No, we can, we can get it. I'll call you tomorrow, walk you through it.
Well, could we put something on the website?
Yeah, maybe we need a YouTube video.
It's on the, it's on the website.
Okay, please, call me tomorrow.
I'll call you tomorrow.
Kobe just volunteered to be the one.
Put things in water bills, too. It's good communication.
Yeah. In any case, I hear you, so thank you.
Thanks for listening.
Any other matters from your work?
April's been taken.
Yes, we're good.
So there are no work sessions tonight, and we're gonna go into executive session. And correct me if I'm wrong, there will be no action taken in that, after that session. It's an informational one?
Correct.
Correct.
So we will not be coming back?
That is correct.
Here, so this meeting is therefore adjourned?
No.
Adjourned to executive session.
Okay, but we are not coming back in here?
Correct.
All right.
Yes, at this time, the council will adjourn to executive session in accordance with Texas Government Code 551.076 and 551.0898 to discuss or deliberate deployment of personnel, security devices, audits, information, resources, technology, or critical infrastructure.
We're going upstairs.
We're going right, right next door.